Okay, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting of July 11th, 2022. Mr. Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Bixson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Here.
Council members Albrecht.
Here.
Gould.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here. Thank you. Will you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And Brian, welcome to your first city council meeting up at the big table. So, welcome. And we appreciate all the work you've done on the computer all these years. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have public comment, scheduled and non-scheduled. Do we have any public comment?
Hello?
Hold on for... No, go ahead.
Am I on?
Yeah, is it Ms. Turner?
It's Ms. Turner.
You recognize my voice?
I did. So, welcome.
Thank you.
So, go ahead.
I have a question about last Thursday's meeting.
Yes.
When you were discussing the Main Street in Romeo Road, I missed the part where, are you aligning with Albertson, or has that been given up?
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We haven't given up. It's not aligned, but it's offset, and that's still... We have a grant for that, Ms. Turner, and that will progress with M.DOT as we vet the plans, get them drawn up. We have to come up with some extra money that we'll be planning for in the next budget year. So, right now, it is still in the plans to do in 20... At the end of '24 with M.DOT to not align it directly, but to straighten it out a little bit.
So, it's not coming towards Rock... Towards Main Street off of Romeo, it's going to be a slight curve as opposed to straight across to Albertson?
I would say that's fair. It's got a little bit of a curve, but then Albertson becomes a one-way, only in, not out. So, it's not a true intersection. It more aligns with the North Drive with Dairy Queen, quite frankly. But it's a little bit of a cocked as it comes in. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Have a good night.
Oh, I have one other quick question. I know you're going to talk about it later, but I might as well get it in now besides dialing all those numbers. With a water increase, do you have to have a public meeting?
Um, no, I do not think we have to have a public hearing for that. But we are going to be talking about that tonight.
Okay. Stay tuned. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further comment? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Body. My name is Angela Rogancy. I am a current city council member in Warren, Michigan, which is strange to be on the opposite side of the dais this evening. I am just here to introduce myself to all of you. I'm a Democrat running for Michigan's 10th congressional seat, which includes both Rochester and Rochester Hills, as well as Macomb County. I just wanted to share a little bit about who I was. I was born and raised in the district now. I have been in Warren approximately 10 years. I went to Michigan State University, have a master's degree from DePaul, go green.
Go white.
A master's degree from DePaul University. I've served most of my career in nonprofits, started in community mental health and substance abuse treatment. I worked in affordable housing and homeless services. I worked in workforce development and career college education, also helping women transition from incarceration back into society when they were finished serving their time. Additionally, I spent about eight years as executive director of a children's charity called Playworks, which is a statewide organization focused on K-5 education and ensuring that children had access to safe and recess and play and sports at school because that is not equal and not a requirement through the state of Michigan. I decided to run for office a couple of years ago because I was just a bit dismayed by what was happening in the country and felt that we needed... I needed to do something. And I've never been a person who's been able to sit on the sidelines and not figure out how to get on the field. So, I decided to run for city council in Warren. If you know anything about Warren, it's an interesting place to be a first-time elected official. I've learned quite a bit on council. And unfortunately, the world just seems to be a bit more tumultuous even since I ran in 2018. And so, I've decided that... I'd had decided months ago that representing folks in DC is important, and we need new and fresh perspectives to old ideas. We need folks who stand for integrity, who have a track record of service, who are willing to advocate and work across the aisle to get things done. As you all know, as locally elected officials, in order to get things done, we have to work across different ideologies and a broad tapestry of ideas and spectrums. And I think we need more of that in DC. And so, I've been going across the district, introducing myself, making sure people can put a face to a name. Would be honored to be the nominee in August and then ideally win in November. So, thank you for your time, and it's lovely to meet you all. And again, an interesting experience to be on the other side of the audience.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Michigan State?
Yes.
Really? Okay, okay. Mr. Kokenderf, a U of M graduate.
Sorry.
Come on up. Welcome.
Go Blue. Good evening, Mayor Bixson and Mayor Protem Salvia, members of the city council. So, I sit on a governing board where our meetings routinely start roughly 20 to 30 minutes late. And I just heard someone tell the mayor that he had 20 seconds to get up to the dais. This reminds me of why I love talking to you guys. You guys run very, very efficient meetings. It's a welcome change. I just wanted to stop by briefly, say hello. I heard that my good friend and colleague, Commissioner Spiz, was stopping by to say hello to you, so I wanted to say a few words about him, not roast him, at least tonight anyways, and just say that I have actually worked with Commissioner Spiz ever since I joined the Board of Commissioners. He's been on the board longer than me. He's been there for about 10 years now. And he is somebody that has deep principles, but is always willing to reach across the aisle repeatedly. He will contact... It is not uncommon for him to talk to people of other party, other ideologies, and without sacrificing those principles to try to offer amendments to certain resolutions to find some sort of place where they can find consensus. And unfortunately, that is increasingly rare in today's politics. It's certainly different than when I started about 10 years ago. If I were to give you just a short vignette about Commissioner Spiz, amongst the communities that he represents, he represents Oxford. That's Oxford. Wow.
I should use them.
Represents Oxford, including when that tragedy hit Oxford High School. And I have never seen someone fight so hard for his or her constituents in that, in getting them the... Not just the financial resources that they need at that time, but also just emotional. He knew a lot of the families. I would see him at many of the events and was really there for them during that time. And it really told me all that I need to know about him being a public servant. If you have a chance to work with him, I think you'll really enjoy it, regardless of your political persuasion. And I want to thank you for taking a few minutes of your time tonight, and have a good rest of your meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. I appreciate the kind words. Mayor, council, as Adam said, my name is Mike Spiz. I represent the northeast corner of Oak County today, which is District 3. And with the redistricting, they have changed that to now District 5, which now includes parts of Rochester and the entire city of Rochester. So, I am here just to introduce myself, put a name with a face. I do have a day job, so I don't do this for a living. I'm an engineer by day. I work for a Tier 1 automobile supplier. And I manage roughly about 100 people globally. So, I have to deal with many different things in to build one on what Adam said. So, I have to deal with many different positions and ideas and how to get things done and what's the best way to get to a resolution. And being by an engineer, you know, I do everything based on fact, right? I like data. Adam will attest to this. I'm always asking for data. Somebody comes to me with a problem, says, "Show me the data. Let's have a discussion and look at the facts and see where we come to a resolution, how to fix this." So, I'm hoping to bring that here to the city of Rochester. You know, from a primary, I do not have a primary opponent, but in November I do have an opponent, so we'll see how that goes. If I'm lucky enough to win reelection, I'll be happy to serve and reach out anytime, even for them. Adam still with you till the end of the year, but Adam and I work well together and get things done. If you ever need anything, either Adam or you call me directly. Thank you.
Thank you for stopping by. Councilmember Harrison, do you want to talk about the public comment, Section A?
Sure. And I believe that our chair, Rachel Williams, is on with us as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. Rachel, would you like to speak?
I would love to.
Thank you. Welcome.
And Amanda can share anything else that I may have forgotten. I am sorry that I'm not able to join in person this evening. I am up north for a pre-planned trip. However, I wanted to invite... Formally invite council to join us at the now an annual event, the Dog Wash on July 23rd from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Last year, it was a great success. We raised $600 in funds. Those funds went directly toward our initiatives for the year, including that beautiful new mural in the park. And similarly, this year, the funds will go directly toward our initiatives, including supplementing plantings at the Mount Avon Cemetery and the Paint Creek Bridge Garden, among other things. We would love for council to join. We would love for Mayor Bixson and Mayor Protem Salvia to join. We would just love to see you all there. You can wear your shirts from last year. But we would really appreciate any and all support.
You got it.
No new T-shirts this year?
No new T-shirts. We thought, you know, we would save the funds to go toward our initiatives instead.
Very good. Councilmember Albrecht?
I can be there this year now that I have a new knee. But are you going to start... I know you always do a great job of marketing. I haven't seen a lot on it, and it's a few weeks out. So, what can we do to help you market it?
Thank you. We have an event on Facebook. We're attempting to reach out to local reporters, including Mary Beth Almond. I'm going to boost the event on Facebook as well. Chief Shattenholm said that he may be able to share it on their social media. If you all individually could share it out, invite your friends that have a furry friend. We'd love to see them all there. But thank you. That's a very good point.
Very good.
Hopefully, everyone can make it. I'm excited to be there.
We're in. We're all in, I think.
Yes. Oh, thank you. Wonderful. We'd love to see you guys there.
So, we'll look forward to seeing you on the...
23rd.
23rd. Very good. We'll see everybody there.
Yes.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Okay. Next is approval... Is there any further? No. Next, you have approval of the minutes, the consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 27th.
Still moved.
2022. Motion by councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by councilmember Sage. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please. Madam, Mr. Clerk, please.
Thank you.
I knew I would do that.
Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. First, the consideration of a special event application from the City Beautiful, here to hold a dog and butterfly Dog Wash on Saturday, July 23rd from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at City Hall, right by the police station tennis courts over there. And then, review of the current special event calendar.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by councilmember Harrison.
Support.
Support by councilmember Peterson. Mr. Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. There's no old business or table items. There's no public hearing, legislative deliberation. There is a legislative deliberation is consideration of the 2022 water and sewer rate proposal. Marcy, do you want to come up and... Thank you.
Sit here if I can.
Always the grim news of the water rate increases.
All right. So, thank you. So, what we're proposing is a 1.76% increase on the water and a 3.73% increase on the city sewer charges.
I think Marcy might need to use the break. Yeah, there you go.
Do you want me to repeat? Are we...
Yes.
Okay. So, we're proposing a 1.76% increase on the water rates and a 3.73% increase on the city sewer charges. So, that would be... We're proposing an effectivity date of 9/1 of this year. So, on this table, we like to show our history. So, this far column to the right is the proposed rates. And we have it broken down because we have the two water systems in the city, the well and the Gleywa water. And then, the bottom rows represent the sewer, which is the same for both types of users. So, you can see that in 2019 and 2020, there was no change at all in the sewer rates proposed for the city well and Gleywa, and no change in the sewer for 2019 through a three-year hold through 2021. So, this year, we're proposing the pass-through increase that I mentioned before, the 1.76 on the water and the 3.73% increase on the sewer charges. So, how does this impact our customers? So, if you are a well user or a well... You get your water from the Rochester well, and you're... Let's just pick a medium user, a 20-unit-on-average user. The impact that we're proposing annualized would be less than $23 per year. If you're on the Gleywa side and you're that medium unit user, then your impact would be less than $29 per year at the rates that we're proposing. I don't know if there's any questions that I might be able to answer for...
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes. Thank you for the information, the pack. And I know we talked about this at the Thursday special meeting, but tonight we vote on it. I just wanted to restate a couple of things that I brought up on Thursday that, and I mentioned, I spoke to the Finance Director, Maggio, about, which is we've done a good job of educating, you know, our residents. I look at this, where your taxes go and all that information, which I carry around with me, not all the time, but...
[laughing]
I love this job, but not that much. But we do a good job of being very transparent. We have a great website. We put a lot of information out there. But not everybody knows to go to what part of the website and everything else like that. I think all of us, to a person up here, have heard about water rates for the last... For years on end. And I appreciate the fact that we held them steady for three years on the sewer rates and two years on the water rates until last year for the water and this year for the sewer. That being said, there's a couple of things. One, I'd like, as we promulgate this information, to put together a brochure explaining the whole Gleywa impact. For those of us on the east side, you know, we are paying a surcharge on top of what Gleywa charges Sterling Heights, which is where we get our water from. So, I think the...
Shelby.
Sterling Heights, what I...
Shelby.
Shelby, okay. Sterling Heights, Shelby. They're close enough. That... I want the residents to really understand what that is because we're not... We're not making money on this. We're really... It's a pass-through cost that we have to unfortunately pass through to our residents, including myself, living on that side. So, if we could do that through all the, you know, on the website with our local newspapers and then an insert into the water bill, you know, that goes out prior to the rate increase, that would be great. The second thing I brought up was, and again, we... Many of us are watching our lawns, you know, die, and we're putting water on there. And I, you know, can't wait for that August bill to come. But that being said, if we could also resurrect the irrigation meter program, that was done several years ago, where people could... And maybe City Manager can refresh my memory, but have sort of a bypass that measures the water that's being used for irrigation, which over time will lower your bill. And I know the city can run an analysis for any homeowner that does that. So, those would be my two asks for administration to put together so that people know why this is happening, what they can do about it in terms of reducing some of their irrigation water and be prepared for the increases, even though, as you suggested here, they're, you know, over an annual rate. They're nominal, but with everything else going up, it's just another expense we have. Thank you.
Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you. I agree with councilmember Albrecht. This is going to be a real burden for our residents. It's frustrating to see our water rates, as well as everything else, continue to rise. So, I think that educational component is going to be really important. And I, too, would love for it to include ways that we can all conserve water. So, watering our lawns in the off hours or really early morning hours, turning off the faucet when you're brushing your teeth, all those little things that can really add up to make a difference. I think it's a helpful reminder to include because we want to be really transparent with this increase and make sure that it's communicated because no one should have a surprise in the mail.
Councilmember Peterson?
Okay.
Mayor Protem? Go ahead.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the information. In terms of this information, I just want to kind of go back a little bit to the rate study that we did. We did a rate study, and I think that was really important for the residents to know that we went out and we did that rate study. And we verified that, you know, our goal was to have the cost of water to be the cost that it cost us to provide it, nothing else, as well as to plan for the future. And I think the other goal that we all kind of collectively agreed to is we wanted smooth rates. We didn't want to have any sharp increases and to really plan ahead. So, I think that still continues to be goal. I support these rate changes. To me, they are really just very modest inflationary rates, but even probably less. Actually, they are less than current inflation rates. And then, I did get some additional information. And Finance Director, I don't know if we can share this on the screen, but you did provide the information, kind of comparing our rates fully loaded to our neighbors.
In that last tab.
Because, you know, we all feel the sticker shock a little bit, especially on the east side when we get our summer water bill. And so, Finance Department had put together some information that really compares apples to apples on a quarterly basis for a combined average bill of both water and sewer, all in. And again, just as a comparison while they're pulling this up, Rochester East Side rates relative to Rochester Hills East Side or Gleywa rates are a little less than... 6.6% less. So, our Gleywa rates are less than Rochester Hills, all in. There it is.
And then, go ahead. It'll be the last one.
Oh, the last. Okay, not the beginning.
I think this is the one that has the graphs. Is this the one you're...
You could show that one. I just looked at the combined, combined bill quarterly. So, scroll right.
Is it on this tab here?
Yep.
Okay.
So, comparing Rochester at the 357.65. So, that's the bottom highlighted yellow, right hand under the quarterly bill, compared to the Rochester Hills, which you can't tell... There, you're going to hide it. There we go.
There you go.
Rochester Hills at 381. So, 381 versus 357. And then, for our city residents or city water consumers, 232. So, they certainly have a lower rate. But I thought it was relevant to compare Gleywa to Gleywa. You know, obviously, Shelby is slightly less than ours. And I think councilmember Albrecht's comments are appropriate that residents... It's hard to understand the Gleywa rates. I had a conversation with a woman who works for Gleywa in finance for over 20 years. And she basically said, "It's a black box how they calculate the rates." And every year, she learned something new, whether it be, you know, what's changing in the formula, how it's calculated. And so, I think, you know, at a high level, residents may think, "Hey, we pay 20% premium to Shelby for our water. Can't you just make that 20% premium go away?" Well, if we did a direct connect-in, our rates might go up because of the cost of capital that we would have to put in to do that. So, again, I think there has to be ongoing discussion and study regarding water rates, our capital plans. I support this rate change. And then, the one question I had is normally, we have a resident on our committee. So, have we reached out to Roy Knizny to get his thoughts or at least let him know what we're talking about?
We haven't reached out personally. We did try to set up that infrastructure committee meeting, and we weren't successful at getting that set up before the previous meeting that we had on Thursday. But I believe that there's enough information with rates and with our future projects that we're definitely... We're not going to abandon. The infrastructure committee is what I want to pass on. It's just a little bit of a difficult time to get everyone together. So, that's why we didn't get his feedback, but I can reach out to him. I think he's a lovely gentleman. So, I'll be glad to reach out to him personally and get some feedback for the council.
Very good. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. Again, thanks for this great information. You know, many years ago, I came from a water department before here in another state, and we had water conservation was one of the big things. I don't know why we don't start something here with that, not just along the irrigation, but having certain days in that. Because based on that report that was done before, they also stated that we have the highest water usage than any of the surrounding communities. So, you know, and that was alarming then, right? So, those two things. Plus, back on the page where you show the low, medium, and high, how did you come up with those, that usage amount on the side? Because I've been here almost 40 years now, about 38, and I have the same water usage almost every month. Okay? So, only thing that changes, usage doesn't, just cost does. So, I just wondered how you came up with that because it says that 40 is high, and there's a big delta of 60, you know, in usage there.
We randomly picked these numbers to set as the low, the medium, and high. And then, we just wanted it to be consistent between the well and the Gleywa side for comparison purposes. There are going to be anomalies to this, most definitely. So, you may have, you know, you may have low months when your kids are away in college, and then your kids come home, and then suddenly, you're in the very high range. So, there's going to be like a little bit of an averaging out of this. But we just... We randomly picked these, and we did kind of a... Maybe you can share a little bit of how we gathered this. But we picked some swaths of information from the BSNA and pulled this together and put them together in these four... In these four levels.
Well, I just think for transparency purposes, I do feel that it should be like 20 should be low, 40 should be medium, 60 to 70 should be high. I think because that... I just know that I don't do all those extra things at the house. So, I just think that it would be more transparent to show because I don't think... I don't think there's very many people that get 40 unless they're the seniors and that they're 40 and below.
So, do you mean what are the... What would...
I would say that anywhere, you know, up to 20 would be the low.
Okay.
And then, you know, 20 or below, and then 40 for medium, and then at least 60 or plus for high. Because then, you're only a 30 delta in between that and the very high. And then, you can tell, like, I think just overall, if we really were to analyze the bills, we'd see where we were at. Because now I know... I know now by looking at that that the numbers are even larger, you know, for what someone... And I know it is annualized, but just... It's always been my thing about the bill showing that difference of what someone's going to truly pay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Albrecht?
I just wanted to add on to my thoughts after hearing from councilmembers Peterson and Harrison and Mayor Protem Salvia. The conservation, I remember bringing this up a few years ago also. You know, when you go into Rochester Hills, they have the boards... you go into Rochester Hills, they have the boards up, you know, they, every other day watering or water before 4 o'clock or what have you and all those kinds of things. So, and those educational materials that I requested administration put together, could we devote a section to water conservation, perhaps put it in our next newsletter, Nick, so that we, we become, we become a, a city known for conserving water also. And with that being said, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution to change your water and sewer rates effective September 1st, 2022, as presented.
Motion by councilmember?
Hello?
Hold on one second.
I'll support the motion.
Motion by councilmember Albrecht, support by Mayor Protem Salvia. Ms. Turner, do you want to say something?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I have a question before you pass this.
Okay.
The sewer infrastructure and water infrastructure usage. What is in that pile and where is it and how much, since you've been charging it, do we have? And it, does it all go to the general fund and does not go to the water and sewer improvement?
Mr. Anthony, do you want to answer that?
Oh, absolutely. The Water and Sewer Fund, our enterprise funds, there has not ever been a transfer out of Water and Sewer to general. That money stays in the Water and Sewer Fund. And then those funds are used to then do the future projects and/or if the projects are large, like when we're doing the, the DWS or off the, the state revolving fund programs, those infrastructure charges are then paying for those bond payments, the principles and interest. But it stays in the Water and Sewer Funds.
All right. So we're not using that money for any other purposes?
No. No, no, no. That's, that's.
Could you please provide the public with that?
All right.
What the fund is and, and what it's been used for?
Mayor, if I can, are you looking for like the, like what projects we've done in the last so many years?
I'd like to see how much is in there and how much we've used and for what it's been used for.
Gotcha. We'll have the, that's in every quarterly report. Our next one will be at the next meeting in July. The Water and Sewer is part of it. I will make sure to get, I know we have a list of all the projects we've done for Water and Sewer. I'll make sure to get that list. We may even have some maps that, that color code the streets of which one we've done. I can make sure to, to add that into that agenda item if that would be helpful.
Okay. The other thing I want to ask is, a couple months ago, back when we had our old city manager, why they were doing the Quinder Avon 23 mile road thing, they talked about hooking up directly to Great Lakes and bypassing Shelby. Has anything come of that? Is it just been blown out of the water or is not?
Mr. Maggio?
You can take that one, Mayor, if you'd like. It, it is, we've run a few analysis on it and the issue really comes down to the mysteriousness a little bit that council, Mayor Protem Salvia alluded to earlier on how Glee Wa uses the rates to calculate what they would charge us. For example, they wanted to use the 2012 usages amounts for the city to, to come up with the rates. And what that would mean is, from what we're paying currently, even though it's a 20% markup to Shelby, it would be an over 30% increase to rates just to switch over. That has to do with.
A one time or?
No. Every, the unit, per unit charge is that much higher. The reason Shelby's is lower is there's a bit of the bulk purchase into that, but it's also the average in distance to the water plants. And they have five different connection points, so their rates are lower inherently. We only have one connection point to Glee Wa. So our meter pit, based on the distance and elevation, actually charges us more than Shelby's averaged lower rates. So we also, there's, there's a second thing that hasn't kicked in yet. If you've, may have heard last year either at council or in the news that we had, Shelby had multiple days of going over the allotted amount that Glee Wa lets you use. So with that, they had to build and have completed, I believe it was 3 million gallons of storage to mitigate the usages on the peaks and, and really just the peak hour demands daily won't, wouldn't change. What that will trickle down to us is since we pay in a markup to Shelby, as soon as the average, because what they do is they average three years, they're gonna see the lower usage from Shelby on the peak time and that's gonna drive Shelby's rates down. So there will be a bit of a delay for the Glee Wa rates, but there should be a significant I won't speculate the amounts because we just had the one year's worth of data, but it would be lower than what the current amount is to Shelby. So since we don't have storage tanks for us to get off of the system now, not only would it have been a 30% increase from Shelby's current rates, but with Shelby rates about to potentially go down if it continues, it would be even a larger spread. So it, it just does not make any financial sense for the direct hookup, really any way we sliced it. We tried storage tanks, different sizes, doing them ourselves, how can we drive the rates down? And it just, it doesn't work out in, in the Glee Wa calculation and they won't budge. Glee Wa would not take into account any other numbers. So it, it just, it didn't pan out.
Now, when Shelby's rates go down, will that be reflected in our rates?
Mayor, if I can, it would because our contract with them is 20% above what Glee Wa charges Shelby. So as soon as Glee Wa would adjust the rates or Shelby would get a decrease in the rates, it's a 20% markup. We don't pay anything else to Shelby, so the rate goes down, our amount would go down. And we have, and we have in the past.
And that would be reflected on our bills?
If you're in the Glee Wa district, yes. You're not.
Well, I'm in the sewer for Glee Wa.
On the well side, last year, there was actually a, a decrease in the rates. So that's, I think that's important to note. That's, that's the transparency that I think everyone is looking for.
And you'd be correct too, on the sewer, the same thing would follow sewer, though the calculation, that doesn't have to do with Shelby, that's gonna do with Oakland County. And that's through the Water Resource Commission's office. But I don't know if you're watching on the screen or not, but that's why we have not had any rate changes in three years, is it's, it's been very well, I would say managed and make sure not to pass on anything that didn't need to get passed on. And we have not had a sewer rate increase.
But you're putting one in tonight?
Correct. Last one was 20.
Two years ago.
18 was the last rate change to 328. No change for 19, 20, or 21, and then the increase for 22.
And you're telling me that comes through Oakland County?
That is correct. Yeah, we're part of the Oakland County Collective for the sewer. So that's through Oakland County.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything, anything further? Councilmember Peterson?
Looking, oh, looking further out, do you see, how do we look for next year?
The seasons obviously drive the water usage and the sales. So when we're using the three-year averages, we're staying very steady, even in the Raftellis model. When we look out at the end of the, of '25, our fund balance level is projected to essentially not change. So the money that's coming in, even with the increases, is going right back out in projects and everything else. So we're always watching that, the end of the multi-year period. We know we're having a drier season this year. The bills so far from Shelby have been 50% higher in usage from last year, so we know it's a dry season. So when you have the, the lulls and the highs and the lows and all that as we go along, they average themselves out over the long term. But in the short term, then, we could, if it continues, expect more revenue into the fund through the summer this year, which would then offset projects in the future years.
Without having to do any increase then?
Very flat. So one of the things out of the study was to keep the rates, no big jumps, as Mayor Protem stated earlier, that was one of the big things, keep them smooth, small, and manageable. That was, that was the key parts to it. So the small increases along the way should keep us, and, and we're still right on track to the model too. We're not off.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Further discussion? I'd just, I'd just like to say, as I said Thursday night, we've been having this discussion for as long as I've been on council, which has been a long time. Every time we come up with an idea on how to fix it, it's, it doesn't work out. It's, it's the same situation as it's Detroit Water, now it's Glee Wa. They call the shots. It's monopoly. They give us what they give us and unfortunately, we, we have to take it because we're on their system. If they're mismanaged, as they've been in the past, we bear the brunt of that. So I think we've done a good job of keeping it as low as we can. But that's just a fact of, of life right now. So we will continue to work to keep it down, the rates down. You know, all the things councilmember Albrecht said about conservation stuff are good, but these things are just facts of life as much as we don't like it. And that's really where we are. So Mr. Clerk, the role, please.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Guys up there. Next, while you're up here, reports of the regular business as received in the check register reports. Manager, do you want?
There's two reports this evening, for 6:30 and for 7:05 in your packets.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay. Next, we see a report from the various boards and commission. First is a report from the Older Persons Center, Older Persons Commission, OPC, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes, absolutely. OPC Board met July 7th. Coming to Rochester City Council August 8th will be the, the budget. So the budget was approved at that July 7th meeting. I'll speak to a couple highlights of it, but you'll be seeing the details in that packet. In general, it is a, it is a, a budget for 2023 through 2025 where revenues are exceeding expenditures by $400,000, kind of on average for the next three years. It does maintain the minimum 25% fund balance. They actually have a much higher fund balance than that, but that is their target to maintain at least 25%. They are spending in this budget $346,000 from capital, for capital improvements. That really is the focus of the budget, is really focus on those capital improvements for the next few years. One other thing I wanted to note was we discussed inflation rates in the budget and they're using some very conservative inflation rates. In some cases, depending upon the category, 10 to 12%. So not just the 2 to 3, not just the current 8.6 rate of inflation, so as high as 10 to 12. So trying to keep that budget very conservative. So council will see that August 8th. In terms of the, the OPC Center, things are going great. They just had the wonderful summer soiree. I saw many council members and mayor was there. They did raise $54,000 for Meals on Wheels. They did ask that I announce the upcoming event called Top Chef. It's August 11th from 5 to 7. It's $15 a person. They haven't done it in a few years, but it was a great event in the past and encourage everyone to come out and enjoy that event. Last thing is that there will be a special board meeting on July 19th for the OPC and that will be discussing the, the efforts of the rebranding committee. So more to come on that.
Any questions? Okay, next we have a report from the Planning Commission. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing we reviewed was the site plan at Far, Pharmaceutical for an interior renovation and second story addition to building there on the, on the main campus. The public hearing is set for August 1st with regard to that project. We did our first review of, in consideration of all the zoning district changes that were incorporated into the master plan. And then there'll be subsequent further discussions that obviously will also have to be addressed here as well. And finally, the, I think we're trying to set some timing, correct me if I'm wrong, city manager, September for the joint meeting between Planning Commission and council?
Correct.
To review the zoning and planning process.
Any questions? Any question? I think just one thing, we, the, the July meeting got pushed because of the 4th of July weekend. It's gonna be Thursday, the 21st.
Correct.
So we have not had the normal July meeting. It got pushed to the 21st. Next is a report from the, from Rara. Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Mayor. This was a special board meeting called just before the 4th of July holiday on June 30th. There was really just one item on the agenda, which was to approve an agreement, a resolution so that we can sign for the sale of the 480 building on Second Street. So that was presented and, and passed. I don't know if it, what, what's, what I can announce publicly yet in terms of the purchase agreement, but it was a, a very good, good price and we like the, the buyer. And there is some equipment that the buyer is not gonna use, that we are gonna put up for auction, but we know that the OPC has expressed some interest in their workout room. So if they make the right bid, they will, they will, they will get that. But, but more to come, but all good news on that. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Okay, next, onto General Miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I would just have one thing. Jenna at the DDA sent over their wild week this week at the DDA. So they have sidewalk, sidewalk sales start Thursday, Friday, Dancing in the Streets Saturday, Movies in the Moonlight Saturday night, Farmer's Market, obviously during the day, Saturday. So the ladies are working many, many hours.
I think Dancing in the Street is Friday night.
Is it Friday night? Okay. I think you're right.
Thank you. Because that's the day I'm supposed to go down there for Dancing in the Street.
That would be, that would be good if you were correct.
I could be wrong, right?
You're right.
Dancing alone, man.
I'm saying, you're right.
Not the first time that.
Yeah, that's Friday and Saturday's Movies in the Moonlight, so Friday, Saturday. Sorry about that.
Dancing Street is from 6 to 10.
There you go.
Friday night on, back on, it's still gonna be on Fourth Street.
Correct.
Where it was.
And we have Fourth Street complete now, so they're ready to go. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, anything tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just say that we're about three weeks out from the August primary, so if anyone needs an absentee ballot, they can come to the front counter and see LeAnn or myself. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Gould?
Just one thing. Thank you. I will not be able to attend the dog wash, unfortunately, two years running. I'll be out of town, but my thoughts will be with you.
There you go. Thoughts and prayers. Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. I just would like to ask for an excused absence for the June 27th meeting. Like all of us, we all try to schedule our vacations around city council, but this trip got rescheduled out of my control due to a COVID reschedule, but I would appreciate an excused absence.
Motion to accept Mayor Protem Salvia's excused absence.
Motion by councilmember Albrecht. It's Bart. It's Bart by councilmember Sage. Mr. Clerk, the role, please.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yep.
And Gould?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one other thing. I just wanted to thank administration for putting this Ready Rochester flyer in the tax bills. And I think most of us on council got the alert tonight for the weather. So for residents, text READYROCHESTER to 38276 if you want to be in the know on what hap, what's happening in Rochester. That is all.
Very good. Councilmember Sage?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Nothing, Mayor.
I'm gonna skip councilmember Harrison, go to councilmember Peterson.
Nothing.
Councilmember Harrison, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I would, I regret to inform you that I will be resigning from the city council. My last meeting will be on July 25th. I've accepted a new full-time position for the city of Wheat I've accepted a new full-time position for the City of Wheat Ridge as their Communications Manager. Awesome. Which is, thank you, just outside of Denver, Colorado. Yeah. So I will be, I will be moving and honestly, it has been such an honor to serve with all of you on the City Council. I think that we have worked so well together. I've made such wonderful friendships and I think that as a team, we've accomplished a lot. We have seen two budgets passed unanimously under this council. We oversaw the building of our new DPW. I've gotten to see two murals go up in the city and I feel really proud of my time here in the city. And I know that I'm leaving you in very good and capable hands, so I'm going to miss everybody so much. That's actually sad.
And then your last meeting is?
July 25th.
So then I think we can all say something at that meeting.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Wow.
Anything else? That's enough, Fred.
Excuse the absence. I'll make a motion to- Please. For her excused absence for last meeting. I was ill the last meeting and was not able to-
Motion by councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by councilmember Albrecht. Mr. Clerk, the role please.
Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. So we now have an opening for our City Council. We've gone through that process before, but I think this time there's going to be a year and three months. So I'm assuming that we will be filling this. So the process will be that you need to send the clerk, Mr. Clerk or Madam Clerk, in the next two weeks, a letter saying that you're interested in running, just like we did last time. So we put out, you know, on social media, on our website, everybody who's watching, everybody on council, let people know that you have two weeks to send in your application or not even an application, just that you're interested in running. Then we will send those names to all of us on the City Council. Then we'll have two weeks to do whatever council people choose to do, those two weeks, talk to people whatever they want. And then we're looking at making some kind of decision on the first meeting in August. I'd like to ask the clerk to send out a email to all the people who applied last time, excluding councilmember Gould, because councilmember Gould is now councilmember Gould, so he does not need that email since he was elected in the last election. Mayor Protem Salvia.
Mayor, if you could just clarify the date, what is the date that they need to send in that?
So by, by Monday, July 25th is our next meeting, so applications need to be, and again, not an application, just a letter saying an intent to be considered for this position. And then what's the meeting date?
August 8th.
Yep.
August 8th is the meeting that we will invite people, if they choose to, they can come and say a few words about themselves and then we will deliberate as a board to appoint a new City Councilperson to replace councilmember Harrison.
Will we be voting that day?
We will be deliberating that day. There's an intention that we will vote that day, but that's what we will decide that day. We can decide to do whatever we want to do. But that day we will be deliberating and probably voting on a new replacement. So again, any questions, reach out to the City Manager, his staff, to the City Clerk, but those are the, that's the procedure. I'm moving forward with that and hopefully we will be able to fill that position soon and get the board back up to the full seven number panel as quickly as possible. Any further questions on that? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.